I'll now call the special meeting for removal slash, oh, we got to, I'm sorry, we got the workshop first.
Copy that. Thank you.
We'll open the meeting for the workshop with the board clerk, please take the role.
District one, Barbara Quinn.
Here.
District two, Alexandra Ayala, who's absent. District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
And district seven, Edwin Ferguson.
Here.
We have quorum with six board members in attendance, Ms. Superintendent.
Yes, today's workshop is regarding a potential legal challenge to the harm caused by social media. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bernard if she has any opening remarks.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. We've got some guests here today that I'm very honored to say represented us in some significant litigation involving the Juul lawsuit, which we were successful at, and they are here today to talk with you all about potential social media lawsuit that the board may have an interest in partaking in. So I'm going to turn it over to the attorneys that we have here today to go ahead and introduce themselves and get right into their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, Council members of the board. Thank you very much for having us today. My name is John Kiefer. With me today at the far end of the table is my law partner, Austin Brain. We're from a law firm in Kansas City by the name of Wagstaff and Cartmel. Seated to my right is Matt Mokwa. He's a partner with the mayor law firm in Winter Park, Florida. We are here today to talk to you about some new litigation that has been and is being initiated by various school districts against social media companies. As Ms. Bernard said, we are the same team of lawyers that has been representing the district for the last several years in litigation against Juul e-cigarette company and Altria. I want to begin with just a super short recap on that because certain issues in that litigation are quite similar to issues in the social media litigation. I guess I would start just by way of recap. I know a lot of the board members were here when the decision was made to initiate that litigation, but maybe a couple were not. Ultimately, over 1,500 government entities, so school districts, counties, and cities, brought suit against Juul and Altria for harms caused to youth as a result of e-cigarettes. Ultimately, that included some of the very largest, so New York City Public Schools, Chicago Public Schools, Clark County, Nevada, and Las Vegas, all of which were our clients. But Palm Beach County was one of the first, certainly one of the first 10 school districts in the United States, may have been one of the top, the first five, to step forward and bring that suit. I've said before, but I think it bears repeating, I think it took a lot of leadership, a lot of foresight, and a lot of courage to take on a couple of the largest tobacco companies in the United States in litigation that was complex. And ultimately, Palm Beach helped to lead this litigation on behalf of all 1,500 school districts. The court selected of those 1,500 just four school districts to be what are called bellwether school districts, meaning your case is fully worked up. You have to produce thousands of documents. School district employees have to give depositions. You know, the legal counsel's office and their team really stepped up to the plate. They did everything that was asked of them and more in that litigation. And when this case settled, Palm Beach's case was trial-ready. We were just awaiting a trial date. When I was last before you in December, I reported that there had been a settlement against Juul and certain individual defendants for a little in excess of $23 million for, in terms of Palm Beach's share. The one defendant that did not settle was Altria, the tobacco company. We commenced trial against them in April of this year in San Francisco on behalf of the first bellwether case, the San Francisco Unified School District. After about three weeks of trial, we reached a settlement with them that will result in additional monies to Palm Beach County. Ultimately, the gross or the total recovery to Palm Beach will be close to $31 million. Again, I can't emphasize enough the leadership role this district played. The state of Florida had the single largest, what I'll call, critical mass or footprint in the litigation in terms of school districts, in terms of students represented. And as a lawyer who was very deep in the trenches from beginning to end, I can certainly say, school districts in the state of Florida in general, and Palm Beach County in particular, really helped move the needle of that litigation in a way that I think is very positive. I think the monetary result speaks volumes about the success of the litigation, but I think more than just, you know, it's not all about the money. Part of it is shedding a very bright light on a significant problem in the hopes of making meaningful progress toward remedying that problem, helping to hopefully change some corporate behavior along the way. And ultimately, when 1,500 school districts, including some of the very largest in the United States and all of the big ones in a state like Florida, step forward, put their foot down, and are willing to affirmatively litigate on behalf of the district and their students, you cannot overemphasize the value of that, I think, in addressing some of these complex problems. Which leads me to the social media litigation. There is currently litigation that bears some similarities to the Juul case that is pending in California. From the standpoint of procedure, it is aligned almost identically to the Juul case. What I mean by that is, many cases have been filed in the federal court system against four social media companies. Meta, which is Facebook and Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, and YouTube, as a result of harm to kids of various sorts that I'll touch on today. All cases that have been filed in the federal court system have been consolidated under the supervision of a single federal judge in Northern California. That was the same as in the Juul case. And then there's a large consolidation of cases in Los Angeles in the state court system as well. To date, I think about 150 or 160 school districts, most of them smaller, have filed suit in the federal court system, about 60 or so have filed suit in Los Angeles. Those numbers are growing daily, and I, you know, there's dozens of new cases being filed each week. My firm is getting ready to file several in the next few days for some of our very large districts that we represent, and there's a handful of smaller Florida districts that have filed so far. In terms of the litigation, I'm going to skip over a couple of these slides because I know you have a very full agenda, and so I'm going to respect the time that I have A lot of you may have seen this, in May of this year, the United States Surgeon General issued an advisory about the increasing evidence of harms to young people that arise by virtue of social media. That takes several forms. One is social media addiction, which is, there is, you know, a body of literature that is increasingly recognizing the highly addictive properties of certain of these platforms that have features that are designed to, in technical parlance, maximize user engagement. What that really means is keep people's eyeballs, and in this case, the eyeballs of teenagers and unfortunately, a lot of pre-teens glued to these applications as much as possible. That's how the applications make money. They make money from advertising revenue, and one way they sell ad revenue is to be able to show metrics about how many users they have, the ages, the demographics, the time spent daily on the platforms, et cetera. So the Surgeon General issued a fairly detailed advisory citing the mounting evidence of risk of harm from some of these platforms, and it's everything from addiction to time spent on the platform to extreme inappropriate harmful content, content that in some instances is related to self-harm, suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, successful suicide, eating disorder, eating disorders, bullying of various forms, all of which, of the things that I just mentioned, are at least augmented in some way by design features of these platforms. Again, because we're limited on time, I want to be brief, but I do want to say, this lawsuit is not about trying to curtail people's free speech rights or the ability of individuals to post things on social media. And certainly, there are useful applications of some of these social media platforms. What we are concerned about, what the crux of our suit focuses on, are design features of the platforms that make them addictive, that make them dangerous. Algorithms, for instance, have gotten a lot of attention as of late, and I could, again, if we, if we had all afternoon, I could share troubling anecdotes with you of kids who have gotten on some of these platforms and done some what to my eyes are fairly innocuous-type searching and postings, and in a very short period of time, a matter of hours or a matter of days, they are being bombarded with really a fire hose of very dark and increasingly dark content that is being aggregated, amplified, tailored, and served up to them as a result of programmatic features of these platforms. And so the way we view this case, and again, I don't mean to get into the weeds, but certainly lawyers in the room may be interested in this, and I think a lot of people would be. And the Surgeon General actually said it, which takes me to my next slide, and he said, and he really echoes the claims we are making in this lawsuit. And he said, you know, "We hold manufacturers of other products accountable for any unsafe aspects of those products." So for example, if a car manufacturer today made an automobile without a seatbelt or an airbag or with a defective seatbelt or airbag and someone was injured, we would seek to hold them civilly liable in a court of law. What we are undertaking here is really no different. We are not attacking the right of these platforms to exist or to make money. We are not contending there are not legitimate uses of these platforms. We are contending there are design features that are specifically harmful to youth. I mentioned social media addiction. I won't belabor the various things that are on this slide, but as I said, there's an increasing body of literature, seems like coming out monthly, about the deleterious effects of social media on kids, whether that is things like depression, mood disorders, or whether it's things as simple as but as relevant to the school community as attention span, the ability to focus, analytical skills, critical thinking, problem-solving, all of which are diminished by excessive social media use. These are a few of the documented consequences of habitual social media use. Schools are very much on the front lines of this, just as they were in the Juul case. I had the good fortune of spending this morning with several folks here in the district to talk and get an even more granular understanding of the various ways this problem has and does manifest itself in the Palm Beach County schools. So it's everything from the TikTok challenge, which many of you probably have heard of and dealt with, which can be, you know, property damage, which can lead to other harmful things like the need to lock up bathrooms to prevent kids from vandalizing them, but then that penalizes other kids and causes collateral issues. You know, these things don't have simple solutions. Aspects of the TikTok challenge were certainly in some school districts, maybe here, involved, arguably assaults on teachers because they were a part of the dare or the challenge. There is evidence that, you know, student-to-student bullying is in some cases amplified and multiplied by aspects of these social media design platforms, the like feature, for example, on a platform like Instagram. And it was certainly shared with me that, you know, aspects of these social media platforms may be used by kids even outside of school time and not on school grounds, and yet the results of those things spill into the school environment increasingly, you know, in a way that disrupts operations, that gets in the way of the school's mission, that's not good for staff, and that's not good for kids. Again, you know, we've, what we've seen so far in Palm Beach schools is what we're seeing in many of our client districts. There's disruption in the classroom, distraction on the part of students, a drain of resources, whether it's time spent on discipline, whether it's time spent on student mental health and student support services. So this lawsuit seeks, you know, compensation for all of those things. I mentioned the defendants here. I won't come back to that. Much like the litigation in the Juul case, what we are, you know, we bring claims for negligence, we also bring claims for what's called public nuisance. So, you know, monetary relief is the chief thing that we are able to go after as civil lawyers. We're not policymakers, so we can't change the law. We're not regulators, so we can't change the regulatory framework, but we can pursue remedies in civil court. So whether those are money damages, whether those are things like an injunction, those are the sorts of remedies that we will be seeking. Let me be very clear in saying, we don't discourage people from trying to initiate legislative changes in reform, regulatory changes in reform. We welcome those things. And oftentimes, when faced with a challenging problem like this, like the tobacco litigation in the 1990s, the fight has to be fought on multiple fronts. We're the ones kind of fighting the fight on the civil litigation front, but certainly we welcome anybody else that wants to come alongside or work independently to address this. We do feel like schools are the ideal people to bring these claims. You know, like I said, I couldn't be more proud of the result that all the school districts in the Juul litigation, not just the ones that I represented, were able to achieve. We think Palm Beach is unquestionably a leader when it comes to being willing to step forward on its own behalf and on behalf of its students, you know, in a complex situation like this. And so we very much appreciate you considering this litigation, joining it. We're happy to answer questions, and we'd certainly be pleased to represent you if the decision is to move forward.
Vice Chairwoman Brill, then Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. So advancing through your presentation, first thing I did was cut to the chase, what's it going to cost us? And clearly, it says it's not going to cost us anything, that the only cost would be if you, if we prevail, and then we would pay expenses. So I see no downside whatsoever. I did question, if you may recall, when we went into the Juul litigation, and I will admit that I was wrong because clearly we won, and it's a windfall, so I fully support moving forward.
Mrs. Whitfield and Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you so much. First, I want to say thank you for your help with Juul, and it's been such a difficult thing for us to negotiate as a school system, having children vaping. It's widespread. I've been living with a teenager myself, and I don't think she vapes, but I do ask her about it, and I hear about how much happens, so I just want to thank you so much. A lot of that funding that we got, I asked specifically to have it put into education programs here to help stop children and make them realize, you know, the bad sides of vaping, which is all of them. And so that's something that I'm proud to say that we're doing here. When it comes to this, I think we have an uphill battle against the social media. It's been, I've seen it become such a difficult thing for our teachers, our principals, for our parents to deal with, specifically parents. So I think that this is a huge thing that we could then direct funds into, specifically around mental health. If we can prevail in this case, I think I would, I would ask my fellow board members that we allocate funds specifically to help with the mental health challenges that we're dealing with. Also, having additional staff members on campus to help with students that are particularly struggling. I know children who are really addicted, and they just can't get off their phones, and they're not learning. So I think that this is a great opportunity for us. The thing I really loved most about your presentation was the section on punitive charges. I think that as much as we'd like to be preventative here at the school system, the reality is we don't get the opportunity to stop things happening from just education. It's, it is a portion of the way that we can stop issues happening within our communities, but if the companies don't make these things as enticing, and it doesn't make sense for them to do that, that would help us a lot. So I would, you know, highly support you in going after that and trying to get change, just really in a financial way from these companies so that they won't use our children in this way. So I thank you so much for bringing the opportunity to us, and I wish you very well on these next round of going after people who aren't helping our kids. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews.
Yes, good afternoon, and I want to thank our superintendent and our legal team, because I remember when it started, and it started right here, once you got the information and asked us, did we want to participate? And when I look in front of me, I see these wonderful attorneys. You did it. You did it for a lot of children within the United States of America, and that I thank you. We all have to come together to fight against the things that are causing this disruption in the lives of our children, socially, emotionally, physically, with their health, mental health. We just got to come together to do it. So we have to do it from a legal standpoint, a community standpoint, political standpoint. We have to stand up for our children. And so when this came forth, I was very interested, and I was just saying, I hope we win. And when I heard that we were looking good, we were kept updated on where we were and how it was working out, and we got the word that it happened for us and our children and our schools, I was very happy, and I'm very eager to move forward with the social media litigation because it's out of control here, and our children are being just conditioned to it. Morning, noon, and night, you know, they have an instrument in their hand, a computer, a phone, a laptop, whatever, and there's a lot of no control, not intentionally, but these people are very unique on how they can market to our children and hurt them, and they, the kids don't know they're being hurt. And so when we can get together to say, we see what's happening to our children, we can make a difference, from this legal standpoint, I see these districts on this paper, I know them, and we all have to come together to stop it. So just having you all here in Palm Beach County today, as you're working with us and working with children from across the country, I want to say thank you. Let's keep it going, and I invite all of the communities across the United States of America, educational communities, as I said, we all have to get together, and there's something we all can do to stop it, and this is one way to hit the pocketbooks. Thank you.
Any other comments? So thank you for coming this evening. I understand from the superintendent that in an upcoming agenda, we'll have a board item to vote on whether or not we want to move forward with you, so we're not doing that tonight. This is just a workshop. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you have anything else for this workshop?
No, sir.
We need a motion to adjourn this workshop. Motion by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Are there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right, I'll now call the special meeting for removal objections to books to order at 2:25 PM. The record should reflect that all five, all six board members are currently here other than Ms. Ayala this evening. Also joining us is Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Tony Beloda. This is a special meeting for the board. 3:25, excuse me, the reflection on the clock, I couldn't see it. So we're officially starting this meeting at 3:25. Today, the, I'm trying to figure out now where I'm at, thank you very much. This is special meeting for the board to consider the appeal of the denial of an objection to books in the Palm Beach County School District. Today, the challenger will have the opportunity to address the board regarding his objection to the availability of the Bible in Palm Beach County school libraries. We will also hear from community regarding their comments on this topic. All speakers' comments must be related to the topic before the board, and if a speaker chooses to read an excerpt from the challenged book, the Bible, we ask that you first identify the version and where you are reading from, chapter and verse, if known. All speakers are also reminded of our expectations contained in Board Policy 1.03 of civility and decorum in our board meetings that state that public speakers must refrain from obscene or vulgar language or conduct, or statements that tend to incite violence or the breach of the peace, and shouting, heckling, jeering, hissing, booing, engaging in speech that defames individuals or stymies or blocks meeting progress, or loud, excessive, or prolonged applause that disrupts the meeting are prohibited. Therefore, any behavior of this type will not be tolerated and maybe, may result in the removal of that person from the meeting. The basis of the challenge is on the alleged grounds that the Bible contains harmful and offensive content, excerpts from, of which may be read at this special meeting. We need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Are there any disclosures? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Are there any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, Mr. Silver, as the appealing party, you now have five minutes to address the board, after which the superintendent will have five minutes to respond. Would IT set the clock for five minutes? Rabbi Silver, please watch.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. About half my speech is now gone because I can't mention anything obscene, which is, which fills the Bible, and most of my speech was about the obscene passages. It is interesting that the school board shields itself from obscenity but doesn't do the same courtesy for our children, who are subject to grotesque obscenity, incest, rape, misogyny, bodily functions, all types of heinous crimes and acts that children are shielded from. As the father of this year's Olympic Heights valedictorian, Brandon Silver, and the father of the University of Florida Honors College cancer researcher, Ari, who graduated two from Olympic Heights, as the husband of a teacher in our public schools, as a former teacher myself in the Palm Beach County schools, as rabbi of Congregation Lador Bador, founder of the local Temple of Understanding and lifelong educator, I have grave concerns about the Parental Rights in Education Act, the Stop Woke Act, and other efforts to ban books in Florida. The previous principal and superintendent did not take these statements seriously or these issues. They cited criteria of validity and has to be accurate and can't disturb people, but they didn't follow through on applying those criteria. I hope the school board will take it seriously. A cursory review of the Bible, and I cited chapter and verse, so I don't have to repeat all the obscenities, makes it very clear that the Bible is at the top of the list of every single category established by the governor and the Florida Legislature for banning books. My connection with the Bible comes from two main sources. My father interpreted the Bible rationally, and he showed me, not just by his words, by his actions, that the Bible can inspire people to create an idyllic family life, society, and world. But when it's taken literally, as Christopher Hitchens said, if God wrote the Bible, let's just hope he was having a bad day, those societies that use the Bible as their guide always are degraded. They're always anti-scientific and intellectual, and they always target Jews and then everybody else. We don't want to go through that same terrible history here. Our governor wants to replace secular humanism, which is his way of saying rational thinking, with indoctrination. His laws say that you can't indoctrinate, but his laws don't stop indoctrination, they just replace indoctrination with his indoctrination. This school board has an opportunity now to tell the governor, we don't need a bully in the bully pulpit who's going to tell our children what to think. I like to think my kids did well in school because I didn't tell them what to think, I taught them how to think. And the way you think is by having exposure to lots of different views, not by censoring books. I'm not for censoring the Bible, except if you're going to censor it, then at least do it even-handedly. We've seen what happens to those societies that take the Bible as literally true. I do have a compromise, though, for the school board. If you're not so inclined to go along with this, I do have a compromise. If you put the Bible in the library in the fiction section, and you place a red warning label saying, "This book has been responsible for the death and murder of millions of people, it's been responsible for the oppression of women, for the enslavement of blacks, for genocide, and for treating the planet as our personal garbage can to exploit as we wish rather than a wondrous source of life," if you will do that, I will withdraw my petition. Or you could place it in the mythology section, along with Greek and Roman mythology, just call it Jewish and Christian mythology. Because if our children are not capable of distinguishing myth from fact, they will grow up to be myth-led, myth-informed, mythogenistic, and myth-guided. This school board has an obligation to create students who are free from religious indoctrination, who can think for themselves, our problems are too serious to allow our children to be subjected to this type of indoctrination. We are counting on them to lead us into the future. Our founding fathers understood what happens when you mix church and state. They said that we don't want the soil of America soaked in blood as it is in Europe, so they created a wall of separation. These laws, these book banings, try to dismantle the wall of separation. They ignore the history of what happened when the two merged. Crusades, pogroms, the torture of Crusades, pogroms, the torture of scientists, the intimidation of Darwin. It's a chamber of horrors. I hope the school board will send a message to the governor. Let us educate our children how we know we don't need you to tell us how to do it in Tallahassee.
Mr. Superintendent, you now have five minutes to respond.
Thank you. Our school district has been very careful to implement and abide by recent legislation regarding books and instructional materials in the least disruptive manner. We've been focused on ensuring that our students have as much access to information and reading materials as possible. We have not banned books in Palm Beach County. After reviewing approximately 2.5 million books, the adjustments we've had to make to ensure compliance with the law were minimal. We have followed both the spirit and the letter of the law, respected the rights of our parents while continuing to expand our classroom and school media, library, media center libraries. We've continued to add books. We've made a major purchase a year to bring in more books. Early on in this process, when the legislation was first passed, I was offered suggestions and proposals to just box up the books, close our media center libraries. And I rejected those because it goes against everything we stand for. We've been very careful to, again, respect the parents' rights, abide by the law, remain compliant, and continue to provide a wide array of reading materials to our students. I think it's also important to note that the Bible is not part of our curriculum. But it's available to students in some of our libraries across primarily our high schools and a few middle schools. In the same token, we also have versions of the Torah and the Quran available in our schools as reference documents. Specific to Rabbi Silver's appeal, I want the board to know this objection has been fully evaluated at both the school and district level in accordance with your policy, School Board Policy 8.1205. Ultimately, his objection was rejected based upon Florida statute, Section 1003.45, which expressly permits an objective study of the Bible and of religion in public schools. I'd also like to point out that Rabbi Silver's request includes the removal of the Bible from all public schools in Florida. I know the board's aware, but for the public, I just want to clarify that the school board here only has jurisdiction to take action within the school district of Palm Beach County. It's clear to me Rabbi Silver's appeal is intended to send a broader message about the slippery slope and perils of book banning. I am not comfortable banning any book for the sake of making a point or sending a message. My recommendation is the board uphold the decision reached at both the school and district level and reject Rabbi Silver's appeal to remove the Bible. Thank you.
All right, we have quite a few speakers that we're going to listen to first, and then the board will have discussion and make a decision as to what we're going to do here. So I'm going to call you three at a time. Please come up to the podium. Please be ready to take over as soon as the first speaker's done because we have quite a few. We have to get this meeting finished by 5:00 p.m., which we have a time certain board meeting. Otherwise, that meeting, this meeting, will be suspended and reconvene around 7:30, 8 o'clock tonight. So I can understand that most of you would like to not sit here for those many hours. So please be quick getting to the microphone. I'll start with the three that are on the list, Dr. Ray Henry, Lynn Hubbard, and Reverend Cindy Falco. Please watch the clock. You have three minutes. The clock will, the microphone will automatically turn off at the end of three minutes.
You tell me when to start.
Go ahead. May I state your name, please?
Dr. Ray Henry, Belvidere Baptist Church, West Palm Beach, Florida.
Go ahead, sir.
In case after case, the Bible is returned to the shelves to the following states and school districts. In the Davis School District, which educates 72,000 students in Salt Lake City, they said the sacred scriptures was age-appropriate for all district libraries in June 2023. And they also said the magnitude of the value of the Bible as a literary work outweighs any violence or profanity which it may contain in the book. So says Davis School District Board Vice President Bridget Gerard. Furthermore, the government cannot engage in viewpoint discrimination and must be neutral in considering Rabbi Barry Silver's application. The Bible is not, the Bible is a part of Western canon. And one cannot understand the Western legal tradition and American jurisprudence without recognizing this resource. Rabbi Silver advocates replacing the Bible with a secondary resource called the Encyclopedia of Biblical Errancy. It would only be appropriate to include the, with the secondary source, the original source, the Bible, in that same library. Also, numerous courts have made decisions recognizing the importance of the Bible recently. In Stone versus Graham, the U.S. Supreme Court recognized the cultural value of teaching about religion and the Bible while it banned posting the Ten Commandments in public schools without some religious educational purpose. The court was careful to pinpoint the Bible may be constitutionally used as an appropriate study of history, civilization, ethics, compared to religion and the like. In Wiley versus Franklin, the Tennessee Federal District Court said this, they notated this. "The Bible is replete with writings that are relevant to such secular subjects and interests as history, literature, poetry, music, art, government, social studies, practices, values, behavioral sciences, and more generally speaking, in a broad range of subjects, values, and interests. To ignore the Bible in the vast area of secular subjects is to ignore a keystone in the building of an arch, at least as concerns Western history." Rabbi Silver is employed by the Jewish community to teach the Talmud. Now he is asking you to outlaw the Talmud from a public school. Mr. Silver also is bringing this challenge to remove this Bible from a...
Dr. Henry, I have to cut you off. Lynn Hubbard, Reverend Cindy Falco, Connor Frontera.
Reverend Cindy Falco, I have the New Man Bible. It's revealing the Jewish roots and the power. I first like to say, it's not a religion to have a relationship with God. It's all about relationship, not religion. So what the rabbi speaks about, and I don't want to call him rabbi because I don't think he's a teacher of the Torah, which this is our first chapter here in Genesis, which says, which is very offensive, so he says, which it's not. "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and the earth was totally empty, devoid of all life." The word continues to say that both animal and plant and darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the Spirit of God hovered, brooded over the face of the waters. And God said, "Let light be," and there was light. And God saw the light, that it was good. And God divided the light from the darkness. And God called the light day, and the darkness he called night. And there was evening, and there was one morning, day one. That's just the beginning. Does anybody find that offensive? Does anybody know that this is a love letter? This is inspired by God, and it's by faith. It's not about a religion. It's all about a relationship. And I'm going to ask and give you some reasons why we should not ban the Bibles, which, first of all, let's go to the Declaration of Independence. It states, nature's God. Our whole foundation of being Americans is founded on biblical Judeo-Christian values. How can this even conversation come up? I'm appalled that we're having this conversation at this stage of life, when everything that was written, all our declarations and the amendments that the framers had spoken of, all is based on biblical principles and morality. That's our whole roots for America, to be an American. And this is what this man wants to take away because he doesn't like the God that he supposedly, as a rabbi, teach on? But it's not the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob? It's not the Jewish God, the Jewish Messiah? I am a Judeo-Christian, and I am a Mashiachic Jew, and I believe in the Jewish Messiah. I have no issues with reading this word, which is inspired by God that I have followed since I was three years old and have had experience after experience after experience because of a personal relationship with a living God. I was saddened when this man was saying these things. My heart was hurting. It was grieved. I want to go and share just a little bit more what Benjamin Rush, a physician, a social reformer, and a signer of the Declaration of Independence, said. "By renouncing the Bible, philosophers swing from their moorings upon all moral subjects. It is the only correct map of the human heart." The Bible is the only correct map of the human heart. He concluded, "All systems of religion, morals, and government not founded upon the Bible must perish." He says, in Samuel Adams.
Thank you, Reverend Falco. Lynn Hubbard, Connor Frontera, Jennifer Frontera. Go ahead, sir. State your name.
Connor Frontera.
Go ahead.
"The Bible must be considered as the great source of all truth by which men are to be guided in government as well as in all social transactions." Noah Webster, the author of the Webster's Dictionary, said that. "A schoolhouse is arguably an institution of truth. So why withhold from children the very thing you wish to impart?" Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." By removing the Bible, you remove from children the opportunity to seek the truth. And by disposing of a child's access to the truth, you dispose of the foundation that our founders consecrated when they declared that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are truths endowed to us by our Creator. As Benjamin Rush, a signer of the Declaration of Independence, stated, "If the Bible be known to contain anything that is materially true, the mind will acquire a love for it. And from this affection of the truth, the mind will acquire a discernment in the truths of other books." Mr. Silver suggests to replace the Bible with the Origin of Species and the Encyclopedia of Biblical Errancy. This erroneous suggestion holds no weight because how would a child be able to understand these suggestions unless the child has knowledge of the original work? The suggestions are critiquing. "I received the great honor of teaching AP World History in a Palm Beach County school this past year. And I have firsthand knowledge of the harm that results from withholding the doctrines of Jesus Christ from children. Our children need the Bible, not only to pass the AP World exam, because Superintendent, it is in the curriculum, but to introduce them to the greatest history book ever written, a book that has never been successfully refuted and imparts the morals and values of our children and that our children so desperately deserve to have access to. Our country was built on Judeo-Christian values, so much so that Benjamin Franklin, in his autobiography, instructed his readers seeking virtue to imitate Jesus Christ." Webster also eloquently said, "Education is useless without the Bible." The Bible was America's basic textbook in all fields. God's Word contained in the Bible has furnished all necessary truths to direct our conduct. "Removing the Bible from schools threatens our republic. We profess to be a democratic republic, and yet we neglect the only means of establishing and perpetuating our republican form of government, which is the universal education of our youth through the principles of Christianity. Members of the school board, I implore you to deny Mr. Silver's request."
Say your name, please.
Jen Fontera. "In the late 1700s, a leprosy epidemic raged in Norway. People were so desperate, they finally listened to their preachers and carefully followed the biblical rules in Leviticus 13, saying, 'As long as he has leprosy, he must live alone outside the camp.'" This is where we learned that quarantine helps to prevent the spread of disease. Dr. Rosen states, "Following the precepts laid down in Leviticus, the church accomplished the first great feat in methodical eradication of disease. In 1847 in Austria, doctors were doing autopsies on women who died in labor, and they took their unwashed hands over to deliver new babies. The resulting death rate was 18%. Dr. Samuel Wise made one of the most important discoveries in the history of medicine, isolating dead bodies from healthy people. This took the death rate from 18% to 1% in just three months." He said he derived the knowledge directly from the Bible and Numbers 19:11. "In Genesis 17, God commands us to circumcise our sons on the eighth day. In 1988, scientists were startled by what they called an interesting and unexpected observation. Uncircumcised men were up to eight times more likely to be infected with the AIDS virus. Where circumcision is rare, AIDS is common. In 1932, Dr. Wolbris found that circumcision protects against penile cancer. Of 1,103 cancers, not a single one occurred in a Jewish man. Since then, three large studies have proved his hunch. In over 521 men with penile cancer, not a single circumcised man was found. Worldwide, since 1930, doctors have not reported even 10 circumcised men with penile cancer. It currently stands alone as the only cancer that can be virtually eliminated by a simple preventative procedure, and it is 99.9% effective. Beyond this, I want to speak to the point that the Bible is anti-Semitic. Nothing could be further from the truth than when speaking to the Jewish people. Deuteronomy 7:6 says, "The Lord your God has chosen you out of all the peoples on the face of the earth to be his people, his treasured possession." Romans 11 speaks of how Israel and the Gentiles are to be grafted in together and united under Christ. No one would ever join people they hate. Furthermore, the Bible is as much a history book as it is a religious text in some aspects. It does speak of slavery of the Jews, but it tells how God delivers them. It talks of the persecution of the Jews and the persecution of the Christians alike, but tells us in Leviticus 19, and again in Matthew 22, and again in Mark 12, to love your neighbors as yourself. It says that the greatest commandment is love, to love God. And then the second commandment is to love others. How could this text be considered hateful towards anyone? Stating the bad things happened in history is not the same thing as condoning them. Otherwise, we would also have to eradicate the use of books like The Diary of Anne Frank because they also contain anti-Semitic passages. Also, the slaughter of animals was, in fact, used in the Old Testament to atone for sin. However, the New Testament, Jesus became the lamb slain." Please deny it.
Lynn Hubbard, Karen Moran, Ron Dennis. Lynn Hubbard, Karen Moran, Ron Dennis. Vicky Franzess, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. Franzese, Jane Tierney.
Hi, Karen Moran. I'm going to quote a couple scriptures in the Bible to prove that the Bible has a lot more content than the historical ugly truth recorded in many portions. Yes, the Bible, being a book that includes recorded history, has in its content the good, the bad, and the ugly moments in history. I want, however, to give you a few scriptures on the good. "Beloved, let us love one another; for love is of God, and everyone that loves is born of God and knows God. He who does not love does not know God, for God is love." John 4:7 and 8. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and do not lean on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." Proverbs 3:5 through 6. "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given him." James 1:5. "Finally, brethren, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are noble, whatsoever things are just, whatsoever things are pure, whatsoever things are lovely, whatever things are of good report, if there's any virtue and if there's anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things." Philippians 4:8. King David, who wrote, under inspiration by God, many of the Psalms in the Bible, said, "Thy word is a lamp unto my feet and a light unto my path." "Thy word is a lamp unto my feet and a light unto my path." That's Psalm 19105. In the very first book of the Hebrew Bible, it says in Genesis 1:1, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." Genesis 1:27 says, "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God he created him; male and female he created them." Our founding fathers, in the Declaration of Independence, believed in God as a Creator, for it says in this document, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." The Bible includes a lot of history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Should we try to get rid of a book that includes the history of the ancient world? Anyone who would try to get rid of the Bible would have to be totally ignorant of its contents, its wisdom, its strength, and its encouragement. Are we to throw the baby out with the bathwater? Of course not. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. State your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Ron Dennis. I stand in opposition to removing the Bible from the school system curriculum. How many people are aware that education began by our founding fathers and by the churches to educate people on how to seek education from our Creator God? Our nation's Capitol Building was the place where our nation's leaders of all parties would meet for worship services to hear from God and to seek God's wisdom. That was the Capitol Dome. The Bible has proven itself to be the most accurate document of mankind's history, as proven through archaeology, science, mathematics, and that we are finding the wisdom of the Bible continues to cause our scientists to revise their theories of truth in the history of mankind. I'm a 72-year-old grandpa. I've raised kids, and I'm a very proud grandpa. I went to public school system. I can remember when we would pledge allegiance. I can remember when we would cite the Lord's Prayer. And I got to tell you, the unity and the camaraderie of the people was much greater than it is today. There was far less division in our country. So if you want unity, continue in that way. Let us, let me remind you that our nation's motto is "In God We Trust." I do not think you have the constitutional authority to restrict the Bible, quite frankly. You certainly do not have the blessing of the clear majority of our citizens. Our nation was dearly commissioned as a Judeo-Christian nation. Study the history books. To restrict the Bible in only going to promote disunity leading to pagan values, the history of paganism's freedom will only demoralize us to a sadistic more outcome of unbridled freedom. I grew up where you only locked your doors when you went on vacation. You never knew if your neighbor needed some eggs or milk and you're not home. My parents left the keys in the car, and as kids, we knew that if we misbehaved, our neighbors would tell our parents. I have witnessed the constant erosion of our nation's morality, and you have been placed in a position to resist these forces of immorality. By voting to keep the Bible securely in the curriculum of our children's education, please take that mission seriously. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Come up to the microphone. If I called your name. Yes? Okay, Vicky Franzese, Jane Tierney. Avi Hoffman.
My name is Avi Hoffman, and I stand before you as a very concerned citizen of the state of Florida to address a topic that strikes at the very core of our democratic values. Are we seriously living in a United States of America and a state which allows and encourages the banning of books? Over 900 books have been banned in 21 Florida school counties since 2021. That is not the America that I love and that I grew up in. The eradication of written thought has always resulted in ignorance and intellectual stagnation. History has shown us the perils of banning books. My parents survived the Holocaust, and they always taught me that the Nazis began by banning books, which was quickly followed by the burning of books, which was even more quickly followed by the banning and burning of human beings. We all know about the 6 million murdered Jews, including my grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins, but the Nazis also arrested and killed 6 million others, including the disabled, homosexuals, and anyone else who disagreed with their hateful genocide. Hatred kills. Banning the Diary of Anne Frank in Florida and so many other books is only the first step. In conclusion, the banning of books is an assault on the essence of human liberty. As individuals and as a society, we must stand against such measures and champion the freedom to read, to learn, and to grow. Let us be the cardians of knowledge and the vanguards of a brighter future where diversity of thought is celebrated and ideas flow freely. Together, let us protect the sanctity of books and the boundless power of knowledge. Ban the book bans. And I have 46 seconds left, and I think some of the people here don't understand what Rabbi Silver is trying to say. If you're going to ban the Diary of Anne Frank, then you better ban the Bible. Thank you.
Lynn Hubbard, Vicky Franzese, Jane Tierney. Ma'am, did I call your name? You there standing? Yes, come on up to the microphone. Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking for the Coalition of Black Student Achievement, and we want to address the distress that we have reached a point where we are talking about the banning of books. We believe it's a time to address the truth of what is at stake for the education of our children. To paraphrase Robert McNamara, "We are lost in the fog of the cultural wars," and our children overwhelmingly are black, brown, and marginalized children are the collateral damage. Their intellectual development, self-esteem, self-respect, sense of acceptance, mental health, and cultural pride are at stake. Ultimately, their ability to succeed and prosper in society with equality. In this war, tactics of propaganda are being used. Language and labels inciting fear, grievous anger, and hate are thrown around. Indoctrination, woke, cancel culture, snowflakes, CRT, Marxism, globalism, communism, socialism, collectivism, and of course, George Soros. Subversive language, labels that imply criminality, like grooming and child abuse are employed. Religious judgments such as unnatural, sinful, and evil are pronounced. Language that is irrelevant or has no meaning in this context, and some that has lost meaning in any context, they are red herrings. The goal of the governor and legislature is to graduate ignorant students, ignorant of the social, racial, and identity injustices running throughout our history. Their mission is to entrench white, male, cisgendered power and control. Ignorance is not synonymous with stupidity, is defined as lacking knowledge or awareness in general, uneducated. Synonyms are untaught, unschooled, untutored, illiterate, unread, uninformed, unenlightened. I never thought I would say that the purpose of education is ignorance, but with the controlled thought and censorship of materials sanctioned by the parental right Stop Woke and Don't Say Gay acts, as our children mature, they will progress through naivete and ultimately to ignorance. These acts are repressive in their legislative purpose and power. Moreover, these acts deputize individuals, even a single person, to edit and control books available to all children, despite the overwhelming approval and support of educators and other parents. Ignorance is dangerous, at times lethal, fostering unchallenged hate, intolerance, and racism. Children learn not only from what is said, but what is unsaid. We are responsible for teaching our students the whole truth, not the convenient truth, the politically motivated truth, or the comfortable truth. Thank you.
Lynn, Lynn Hubbard, Vicky Franzese, Jane Justice. I'm sorry? I called three names. Lynn Hubbard, Vicky Franzese, that's F-R-A-N-Z-E-S-E, and Jane Justice.
Hello, I'm Jane Justice. I'm sorry I didn't have the time to prepare, but I know somebody has referred to this book being responsible for the deaths of many people, but actually, it's communism, and it appears like we're kind of leading in that direction, but this is a book that has parables that questions all important things. It's an accurate recording of ancient history. It has beautiful poems and songs that uplift. It gives hope to the hopeless. It's a character-building book, and it unites all people in spite of what you hear. It's a relationship-building book, and it shows us who is God and what he expects of us. We will be judged by his perfect law, and in Revelation 22:14, it says, "Blessed are they that do his commandments, for they may have right to the tree of life and may enter in through the gates of the city." Our Constitution reflects this law. It's based on its precepts, the moral law, the Ten Commandments, and this is also a book of prophecy. And so it tells us where we are headed, like it or not. You heard a quote from the Genesis. I'm reading to you from Revelation 22 now, verse 18. "I testify unto every man that heread the words of the prophecy of this book. If any man add unto these things, God shall add unto him the plagues that are written in the book." Deuteronomy 4:2. "And if any man take away from the words of this book, of this prophecy, God will take away his part of the book of life, out of the holy city, and from the things which are written in this book." I would say that it looks like we've been, you know, it looks like we have tossed our Lord God aside all these years, and we are experiencing many troubles in our country right now because of that. And it's too bad that, you know, people don't actually read the book before they judge it, okay? I was not aware that the Book of Anne Frank was banned. I was not aware of that, and I don't know why it was. I will investigate. But really, people really need to read this book. It's been around long, and it's changed the entire world. And I thank my God, and I'm glad that I'm here, because I know it made a difference to me. When I went to college, my English teacher taught me out of the Book of Job. And I want to say, there's nothing more uplifting than to raise man up to think about higher things. It's okay when we want to talk about LGBTQ and all of that, right? And what's happening to our children? So thank.
Dr. Patricia Sharon, Diane Gelman, and I can't read the signature, but it looks like last name is Saul, S-A-U-L.
Hi, I'm Diane Gelman, and I'm happy to see so many people coming here to talk on both sides. What I do want to say is, it's interesting that when the AP courses were restricted about Black Studies, because there was a section in there about someone who was homosexual, who was involved in Black Studies, I don't see all these people coming out. All the people that are upset about the Bible, I wish they were as upset about the Black Studies or about the Anne Frank situation or about the gay and lesbian situation. It seems to be very one-sided. If you want to know about the Bible, there are segments in there where, when the Ten Commandments were happening, there was an orgy going on. There's incest with two daughters and a father because they wanted to make sure that the heritage would continue. There's lots of things in the Bible that are just as objectionable. Somebody wanted to know about Anne Frank. Well, some mother in North Florida felt that, and I've read this book many times, I've seen the movie, never saw this, but apparently there was some nude sculptures in some park, and she felt that was inappropriate for her daughter. So that was banned, one person out of a whole school district, because that's the way this ban goes. If one person objects, then the whole thing is thrown away. Now, maybe not in this community, but in many communities. My niece can't take the AP Studies that she wanted to take, because it has a section about a gay person who was involved with civil rights. I think that's ridiculous. If that's the truth, then there's no reason to say that this person wasn't involved. Or things about slavery and things that happened that were brutal. Now, if they happened in the 1800s and the late 1700s, our children are not going to feel that they did it personally. That's ridiculous. That's like saying the things that happened in England about the taxation business and all that, that if we have relatives in England, we're going to feel guilty and bad because our relatives were involved in the pre-Civil War or the pre, I'm sorry, the pre-independence. I just think it's ridiculous about banning freedom of speech. We care more about freedom of guns. We have so many deaths happening every day, but we don't care about freedom of speech, which includes freedom of writing. My sister's friend's daughter, her name is Heather.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Dr. Patricia Sharon, MD. I'm a pediatric cardiologist, and I wanted to just address this, because Rabbi Silver wanted to take the Bible out of school. Bible stands as the only book that turns around and tells kids that you are worthy, that there is something good about you, no matter what you think, no matter whether you've been indoctrinated by TikTok or the quick imaging, you are worthy, and we need that. Furthermore, the Bible tells kids that there is retributive justice. What you sow, you reap, and what someone has done to you, they will eventually be paid for it. We needn't grab our guns and our knives and go after the perpetrator as our society would suggest. There is justice. I think Rabbi Silver was a little tongue-in-cheek about the use of Darwin's theory of evolution and replacing it with the Bible. I can't believe that he.
I'm more accurate than you are.
Origin of Species, anyway. Anyway, that really doesn't hold any water at all in medical treatment, medical thought, scientific thought, and if your children use those books and walked out on the world stage, they'd be considered foolish. You know, the kids in England, in Russia, they aren't studying that. China, they're coming here for education, and they're avoiding Florida because of the status of the school systems. You know, your son is a valedictorian. Among who? Among who? You know, you go to schools like Johns Hopkins, where my daughter went, everybody in her study group was a class valedictorian. You know, what are we doing? We're watering down education, we're teaching our kids improperly, and incidentally, my daughter did spend a year at Suncoast, which she felt the students were judging themselves on their class status. Every week, you got a little note on where your class status was, and they felt bad if they weren't number one. Then she went to King's Academy. Well, she graduated there, and she did AP. She got into, she was able to not take calculus because of her AP grades. You know, studying the Bible doesn't dummy you out. It really makes you a more articulate, accurate person, and it would be a fallacy to take the Bible out of the schools. And I just wanted to state that my predecessors did an excellent job. I needn't restate the things that they said, how our entire country is built upon Judeo-Christian values, and when we say God bless America, we're wasting our time if we take the Bible.
Hi, I'm BJ Saul.
Okay, thank you.
And I am a secular humanistic Jew, which means I'm culturally Jewish, non-theistic, non-God. I am an atheist. And I think stating that we are a Judeo-Christian nation is not true, and I feel that the Puritans and people came over from Europe to avoid the persecution that they were getting in England when they came here. And our Constitution was written so that all, note, men, not women, are created equal, not blacks, and we needed to have other things put in place, amendments put in place. And that being said, to say. And that being said, to say that the Bible, Christian Bible, is true and factual is a little scary from my standpoint. We know things have been written by people and interpreted. So that's my opinion on it. We need to teach our children science, reason, and facts with archaeological evidence-based information, and critical thinking skills, and to compare what's going on. Now, I have a statement from the Jews of Secular Democracy. Florida Jews for Secular Democracy supports the challenge to the Bible in Palm Beach County schools. Florida Jews for Secular Democracy, which brings together Jews throughout Florida to advocate for the separation of church and state and to fight Christian nationalism in government, strongly supports the efforts of Rabbi Barry Silver to challenge the Bible in Palm Beach County school libraries. Our support for him reflects our objection to the practice of banning books based on religious beliefs. As proponents of public education, we object to giving parents and community members the right to impose bans on books that offend their religious beliefs. By challenging the Bible, Rabbi Barry Silver is showing the hypocrisy of exempting certain religious books from bans while facilitating the banning of other books based on religious objections. We call upon the Palm Beach County School Board to use this opportunity to put in place a system that prevents religious biased challenges to books. And it is important for our children, if they are going to read one book and look at it as a religious only way, that should be done in church, that should be done in synagogues, not in public education. You can teach comparative religions using all textbooks, but using factual information about them. Thank you.
Sheila Jaffe, Kathy Wallace, Carol Silverstein.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Jaffe. I am the president of the Palm Beach County Chapter of the National Organization for Women. The number of attempts to ban or restrict books across the U.S. in 2022 was the highest in 20 years, according to the American Library Association. Is this real freedom? If folks are outraged about the Bibles being banned, they should be outraged about all the books that are being censored in our public schools, said Casey Meem, the director of Freedom to Read program at the Writers Organization Penn in America. Now, the National Organization for Women is celebrating our 50th anniversary in Palm Beach County. We were created by community activists and professors at Florida Atlantic University. We also created and administered the Feminist Fund at FAU to provide scholarships for students in women, gender, and sexuality studies, formerly women's studies. Now, members are concerned that some Bibles try to indoctrinate people, especially children, with misogynist passages encouraging control and violence against women and children. Number one, man is the head of women, as Christ was the head of the church. Number two, women should not speak out in public, like me today. Number three, stone homosexuals to death. During the Holocaust, homosexuals were required to wear purple patches on their clothing. Number four, anti-Semitic passages, saying Jews are the children of the devil. But Jesus was a Jew. The Holocaust required Jews to wear yellow patches of the Star of David on their clothing. Florida law allows a school district to install in the public schools a secular program of education, including an objective comparative study program of religion and Bibles. Just do the right thing. You can do it. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the school board members who have helped my guardchildren in school, because it helps, believe me, because they care so much about our kids. I taught in the South Bronx. I'm not getting into a discussion of the Bible, as long as all religions are represented. I defended a teacher who used the Quran in a lesson. I taught in public schools by choice. I believe my students should be exposed to all cultures. Thusly, I taught that curriculum. The teachers fought for books in their classrooms and libraries. We could never get enough until Title I came into being. I'm aging myself. I have two autistic grandchildren and five Haitian grandchildren, and they're children of color, and they all need to learn about the world through books. I want them to be educated through discussions of literature in school, and I want them to learn about slavery and anti-Semitism and the LGBT community and all the other people that walk on this earth. Thank you so much for your attention.
Ma'am, for the record, would you state your name? Would you state your name, please, for the record? Ms. Silverstein, I know your name, but would you please...
I'm sorry. They said it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wallace. I live in Delray Beach, Florida. I was born and raised a Catholic. I've been to all the way through high school in Catholic schools, and I have four children that I raised here in Palm Beach County. The stories of the Bible were taught to me as young as five and maybe before. The Bible is a very scary book, full of stories that gave me nightmares as a kid. My birthday is December 28th. If you don't know, it is the Feast of the Holy Innocence. It's the day that King Herod ordered all the soldiers to kill all the babies, boys, in Bethlehem, in hopes that he would kill the king the wise men were talking about. I think about it often, even to this day. My imagination always gets the best of me. Did they stab the children? Did they suffocate it? How do you kill a baby? Noah and his ark, oh, the animals go marching in, two by two, lions and tigers and bears, and they all got along, and they didn't rock the boat for 40 days and 40 nights of rain. It sounded like a really nice story until what happened to all those people on earth? They drowned. I think about drowning for, I thought about drowning for a long time. Did their bodies float? Did Noah have a story, did Noah have to bury all of them when he got to land? Did the animals eat them? It's a nightmare. Cain killed Abel. There's the crown of thorns. There's the crucifixion. Moses and his tribe were slaves. God sent plagues, water turned to blood, sent hail, locusts, darkness, and then he killed all the children again. There are stories of incest, adultery, wars, leprosy, lots of death, people besides Jesus rising from the dead, all pretty terrifying to read. Books are being banned because they cause harm to children, while the Bible caused harm to me as a child. I think the Bible should be banned from school if you're going to ban other books in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
All right, one last time for Lynn Hubbard and Vicky Franzese. All right, board members, I'm going to make a motion to, we'll need a second, but before we have any further motions on the Bible, everybody will have a chance to discuss. So the motion is, I recommend the board discuss, consider, and take action if necessary on the appeal of the denial of the objections to the books as raised by the challenger. Seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. All in favor? Always motion carries 6-0. Now we'll go to discussion. Ms. Brule, first.
Thank you. So I just want to start by reiterating what Mr. Burke stated. We have not banned any books in the school district of Palm Beach County. On a personal level, I do not support banning books of any type, as it is a form of censorship, and I believe it violates the First Amendment of the Constitution. Parenthetically, books presented to children and students should be age-appropriate. Rabbi Silver, I completely respect and understand your argument and position. As I do not support the banning of any book, I am not going to support banning the Bible. Furthermore, as the superintendent indicated, Florida Statute Section 1,003.45 permits the study of the Bible and religion. If a parent does not want their child to read the Bible, that parent should address that issue directly with their child. One parent or one group of parents should not be making decisions for all parents. Again, although I appreciate you and your perspective, Rabbi Silver, I cannot support making the Bible the one and only book I ban.
Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to speak today. I appreciate your passion for this topic. I wanted to say to Rabbi Silver, I completely understand the intention with which you brought this in here. I think knowing that you're a rabbi really, I think, helps to kind of make this argument for you, because you obviously appreciate religion in the work that you do. And I believe, one of the things that I asked the superintendent when I first heard about this was, do we have the other books of religion represented within our school system? And I was very pleased to hear that we do. We have copies of the Torah and the Quran, and apparently, one other book that I didn't even know was related to a religious text. So I believe that all religious texts should be represented within our schools, because I do believe they're historical documents. I think they're really important, you know, in the history of the world. I have no interest in banning the Bible or the Torah or the Quran. I don't want to do it. I don't think that book banning is appropriate, and I agree with many of the things that have been said by a lot of the people that came here today, because I believe everyone should have representation and access to these books. So when we take away representation, I think that is a bad thing. And so today, I do not want to take away representation from anyone, including people who believe in the Bible and the Torah and the Quran. I want them to all be represented within our schools. So I'd like to support the motion that the superintendent put forward to us, or the idea that the superintendent put forward to us, to not ban the Bible today, but I do appreciate the attention that you've brought to this issue, to the state of Florida. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion by board members? Take a motion? Motion by Ms. Brule? Go ahead, read your motion.
Okay. I move that the challenged book, the Bible, remain in the Palm Beach County schools, and that the board deny the appeal of the denial of the objections to the books as raised by the challenger on the basis as stated in the superintendent's June 7, 2023 letter to the challenger, including Florida Statute Section 1,003.45, which allows the study of the Bible in schools as part of a secular program of education, and having considered subsections 4F and H of Policy 8.1205 and Florida Statute Section 1,006.28, including that the General Counsel is authorized to provide a writing to the complainant of the board's decision.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. McQuinn. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. This time, we'll take a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. McQuinn. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. This meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will start at...